I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham. Councilman Smith is absent today. Councilman Avery.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to request Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you give us freely. Father, we thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, most of all. Thank you for the salvation you give us through him, the opportunity to know you in a deeper, much personal way. Lord, we just pray for your blessings on this meeting, on this city. Father, just guide us and direct us as we go through each and every bit of business that comes before us. Lord, may we just please you with all that we say, do, and think, and I ask for your wisdom, your guidance, knowledge, and discernment for both the council and everyone here present. Lord, we just love you, thank you for all that you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on January 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 27th through February 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven on our agenda is where we recognize proclamations and commendations. I believe we have some today from the mayor's office. Ms. King, are you going to do the honors since the mayor is traveling?
On February 3rd, 2023, while Lieutenant Josh Russell and Mr. Jeff Martin were driving down Rainbow Drive at approximately 1:00 PM, they were faced with a decision to jump into action in order to save a young child's life who was in the road. Mr. Martin turned onto Rainbow Drive, traveling north, while Lieutenant Russell was traveling south, when they noticed the young child, around two or three years old. The young child was riding a toy car in the right lane of traffic. The toy car was so small and low to the ground that it was very difficult to see. Mr. Martin was able to station himself behind the toy car to protect the child from oncoming traffic, which allowed Lieutenant Russell the chance to safely carry the child away from traffic. We thank both Lieutenant Josh Russell and Mr. Jeff Martin for their combined efforts in taking immediate action in saving this young child from being hurt. We commend their bravery and their ability to act fast to prevent an awful situation from happening. On behalf of Mayor Craig Ford, I would like to have Lieutenant Russell, I'm sorry, yeah, Lieutenant Josh Russell and Mr. Jeff Martin come up. And I would like to have all of you to join me in honoring two heroes, because today we could easily be a community in the land.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. All right.
On April 4th, 2021, Ms. LaShonda Williams was recognized for being selected from a national pool of 180 applicants as one of 30 library outfielders by the Association of Rural and Small Libraries in partnership with the American Library Association. This is an 18-month leadership training program, which consists both online and in-person interactive sessions. Ms. Williams has recently completed the outfielder program, which classifies her as being outstanding in her field. Her Association of Rural and Small Libraries graduation project is called a story walk, and it is being placed in the Underwood Park located across the street from the Gadsden Main Library. Ms. Williams is the current manager of the East Gadsden branch of the Gadsden Public Library and has been with the City of Gadsden for over 25 years. We would like to congratulate Ms. LaShonda Williams for her recent achievements and many years of service to the Gadsden Public Library. We commend her dedication to furthering her knowledge and librarianship to help enhance the City of Gadsden. So on behalf of Mayor Craig Ford, Ms. Williams, will you come up and join us, along with your family, and I know you have some family members and friends, and also Craig Scott?
I'm here.
Yes, come on up.
Count to three.
I believe that covers all the proclamations for today, is that right? Okay, thank you so much. Item number eight on our agenda is unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1704 McKinley Avenue. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. James and Charlotte Sperling have offered to pay $1,650 for the property. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located on Stroud Avenue. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Judaism for Humans Home Trust has offered to pay $349 for Lot 1 in Block G in the 1,200 block of Stroud Avenue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Items 8C and 8D and 8E, we're going to combine together at the request of the Building Department. This is nuisance abatement lanes for grass cutting. 8C is for $251 for grass cutting at 310 Keeling Road in District 1. True Deliverance Divine Apostolic Truth being the last known owner. All of these resolutions were tabled for one year on February 1st, 2022, and no payments have been made. Item D is for grass cutting lane, it's $251 at 202 East Cherry Street in District 4. Shannon Humphrey and Tasha Stone in care of Gregory Bledsoe being the last known owners. Then item 8E is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property for $251 for grass cutting at 227 Parkway Place in District 7. Lori Carter and Kevin Goodnight being the last known owners. These resolutions were tabled for one year on February 1st, 2022, to allow the owners to make payments. However, no payments have been received. What is the pleasure of the council?
Motivate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll just offer that this was Councilman Wilson and I were on the council, and these took place. We had, I don't know how many, there was over 100 maybe, grass lien assessments, and these owners asked for, to make payments for a year, and no payments have been received. Does anybody wish to speak in favor? I mean, is that, no? Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions assessing the nuisance liens, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all three.
Number nine is, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 704 Clare Street in District 2, Margie Hembry being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come forward to the podium and state your name and your address, for the record, please.
My name is Margie Hembry. I own my address at 704 Clare Street. I'm now, right now, living at 631 Reynolds Street in Gadsden. It's a hard situation with this house. I had to move out of it. I was forced to have to move out of it because of some repairs that needed to be done that was really bad, because it got hit by a storm real bad, and, you know, things do get wore out over the period of time. Well, my husband died. And when he did, I tried to reach out to people and get help, and nobody would help me. I trusted some people that were supposed to fix my house. They got me for $15,000. I then couldn't do anything. And I kept begging and reaching out to people, trying to get somebody to help me, and I've been unable to get anybody to help me. It's special to my kids, and basically, the property's supposed to be left to my kids. You know, my daughter's soon going to be 18. She had bought a building that's owned up the property, and the building is not that old. The house, yes, it needs a lot, and I accept that, and I know it's going down. I just, you know, I need a little more time to see if I can figure out, maybe getting somebody to help me, if all possible.
All right. Well, thank you for coming to speak. The way this works, we're going to hear from Mr. Harbison, the building inspector, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Hembry, I just want to say I'm sorry for the loss of your husband.
Thank you. Do I stay?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll just, you can either sit down there at the, or go back, whichever you want to do. You can sit there on the corner, and Mr. Harbison will speak. Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We filed this case in April of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Harbison, looking at the picture, it obviously in dire need. Is there any opportunity to save the structure by?
I don't know if she's gone through the process in community development. It would have to be owner occupied, it would have to be an occupied structure to qualify for some of their emergency lending program. Other than that, are you asking my opinion? The house needs to be removed.
The, I guess, the physical structure, the building, the roof, and just the integrity of the building, of the house.
Yeah, it needs to be removed.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
Can we, can we table this for one week until Councilman Smith gets back, since it's his district?
Yes, there's a motion, sure. I mean, we'd have to get, oh, that's by him, yeah. Yeah, I don't have any objections to that, second. Okay, all right. So there's a motion to table it for one week until Councilman Smith, who is your council person, he's out of town today. So, and if I can. Sure, please, go ahead.
Ms. Hembry, I just tell you honestly, by looking at it, there'd be no way in good conscience I could advise you to invest in the rehabilitation of that home. I just think you'd be putting any resource, financial resources that you do have into a bad investment. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done to that property, and I don't know that the amount of money you would have to spend to bring it up to code, that the property would ever be worth that amount of money once you did all that work. You see what I'm saying? I know it's a nostalgic piece of property for you, but, I mean, strictly financially speaking, I think it would be really hard to get your money back out of any money that you put into that property. So that's just something to think about, but I'm certainly okay with tabling it for at least a week until your council person can get back, and maybe something can be worked out in that timeframe.
All right, so there's a motion to table for seven days, and we have a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for a week.
Thank you for coming today. I know you're speaking with Mr. Harbison, and so that's what I was going to encourage you to do, is to stay in touch with Mr. Harbison over this next week, okay? All right, thank you. All right, item 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 609 Washington Street in District 3, Free Range Properties LLC in care of Donnie Willis being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in December of 2021. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
All right, what is the pleasure of the council? Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 11, our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 408 Bryan Street in District 6. Krista Brown and State of Alabama being the last known owners. This is for demolition work that has already been performed, and the amount is $2,590. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to point out that this is, this is work that's already been performed, as I stated, $2,590. No payment has been received to the city for the work that the city did. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is our final public hearing. It's a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 253 Tabor Road in District 7. William F. and Mary E. Rollins in care of Marty Rollins being the last known owners. This is for demolition work that has already been performed, and the amount is $4,840. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with MWB Restaurants LLC to locate a Whataburger restaurant at 563 East Meagan Boulevard. This is to grant a rebate, a rebate of 2% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of six years from the opening date or until a total of $515,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. It also authorizes expenditure of city funds for construction of a turn lane and de-acceleration lane to facilitate traffic flow along East Meagan Boulevard. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution awarding bid number 3490 for Nakalula Falls Gorge Trail Pedestrian Improvement Project. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to Bob Smith Construction Incorporated, and the amount is $253,100. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, just wanted to let everybody know what's going on here. This is the decking and wooden stair that goes down into the gorge. It's going to make it a lot easier for our hikers, our campers, our climbers, our runners, and even our first responders to get down into the gorge.
Thank you. Much-needed project. It's exciting.
Yes.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3493 for crushed stone. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Vulcan Construction Materials LLC and Whittaker Contracting Corporation doing business as Madison Materials. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 is a resolution awarding bid number 3494 for cold plant mixed paving material. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Vulcan Materials Company, and the amount is $125 per ton. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 17 is a resolution. This is rejecting bid number 3495 for City of Gadsden Cemetery Lawn Maintenance. Only one bid was received, and the engineering director has recommended rejection due to a mathematical error discovered in the submitted bid. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, again, just as you pointed out, Mr. President, I'll make the point that this was due to a mathematical error in the bid, and I think the process is going to be rebid.
Okay.
Just a technical error here.
Thank you.
We will still have contracted maintenance for the cemetery.
Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 18 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Gadsden Runners Club. This is for the 2023 season club title sponsorship, and the amount is $2,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 19 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Cortera Incorporated. This is to provide data management solutions compatible with the Alabama 811 One Call System currently in use by the city, and the amount is $3,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 20 is a resolution authorizing amendment number two to agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for engineering, design, and construction documents for drainage improvements along the West Meagan Boulevard, North 11th Street, Tuscaloosa Avenue area, and the amount is $359,600 from American Rescue Plan Funds. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Could I just, because I, could you speak to this very briefly, since there's a, you won't be present at the meeting, so we'll go ahead and just refer to this notation in the meeting, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. So this entails the improvements that were looked at a while back. We've had a study going on in this area, basically the North 11th area, West Meagan Boulevard, up Tuscaloosa Avenue, at least for this basin area, and basically goes from North 12th Street over to about Evans Street, and then on up the mountain. This portion of the project is a result of the overall study that was done, and so as we break down sections that need to be completed, for this area, this is the first one which will make, or give us construction documents, plans, and specifications to improve the drainage area from Meagan Boulevard up to the North 11th area and just to Tuscaloosa Avenue, and that, up the North 11th area location. So basically, I'm sorry, I know I'm saying a lot, I'm saying that off the top of my, North 11th Street headed, basically west toward North 12th Street, that area is what this one will entail, but we can't improve the other areas of Tuscaloosa Avenue and upstream until this section is done. And so, again, this is the plans and specifications for that. It'll entail quite a bit of design work that'll need to take place. You'll see some additional geotechnical information and such like that. Some easements will come before you, and then we'll finally have it out to bids, and there'll be a construction contract resulting from it. Is that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 21 is a resolution authorizing agreement with EE Group Incorporated. This is for electrical engineering design and construction documents for Phase 4 of the Gadsden Sports Park, and the amount is $45,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 22 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for civil engineering, design, and construction documents for Phase 4 of the Gadsden Sports Park, and the amount is $88,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 23 calls for new business.
Yes, Mr. President, I have, I'm sorry, I have one item. This is routed from the legal department. This is a document amending the City Code Section 106-2 concerning penalties for littering. As was discussed extensively in the pre-council meeting, we've seen a rash of public dumping issues throughout the city and just about every single district, specifically in some of the downtown districts. So what this would do is increase the fine for first-time offense and second offense from, I believe it was $250 was the first offense, this will increase it to $500, and second offense will go from 500 to 1,000, and the third offense will also be 1,000 with, and a minimum of three days in jail. This is part of an overall effort by the city council and the mayor's office to address this. We've had issues not only with local residents maybe taking liberties with where they dump their trash, but also individuals from out. their trash, but also individuals from outside the city of Gadsden who have brought trash into the city to dump it. So this is just our attempt to crack down on that, and I would imagine that you would see more, more efforts in this direction over the next several weeks. So I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
Third and fourth.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consent.
I move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I believe that's all the new business for today. Item twenty-four, department reports, committees, boards. Jeff, thank you for being here today, as usual.
Good morning, everybody. Just a couple of things that we wanted to update from the EMA side of the House. The EMA responded to a 100-gallon diesel spill very early Monday morning about 3:50 over in Atala. We were able to successfully mitigate that. There shouldn't be any issues going forward, and it was, was examined by the staff, and we were able to obtain pictures, and everything is copacetic with that. This week, by the National Weather Service, has been deemed Severe Weather Awareness Week. They'll be doing their tax holiday at the end of the month this year, and in that same vein, rarely do I stand behind this podium that I don't warn you about severe weather. So we have a chance of severe weather overnight Wednesday into Thursday. We will see a little bit of an increase in temperatures, which will help drive some of that weather potential, but we're gonna be monitoring that. And before I share this, this next one, I wanna, I want to preface it by saying, in graduate school, I was sitting in a lecture, and in that lecture, the professor was talking about essentially there's three people, three types of people in the world. He said that there are pessimists, optimists, and realists. And he brought out a cup of milk, glass of milk, and he said the optimist will say that the milk or the cup is 50% full. He said the pessimist will see it as 50% empty. He said the realist will ask, why is the milk green? So the point that he was trying to drive home was that when people have a vision and people have something that they want to see done, that they want to happen, and they unify behind it, it can happen. And I said all that to say this, that the EMA is now back operational in the basement. We are still in the process of moving some things around and trying to get everything ready, but we are operational. If severe, if severe weather does happen, we'll be there for it. Our community emergency response training begins tonight over at the venue. It's not too late to sign up. It'll be held every Tuesday and Thursday nights from 5:30 to 8:00. And like I said, if you want to sign up, you can just show up tonight, we can get you signed up on the spot. And then the last thing to mention was we will be hosting the National Weather Service in Birmingham. They're gonna be coming to do storm spotter training for us, for the community and for the CERT class on February the 23rd. That's gonna be held in the Gadsden City High School auditorium, and it will begin at 6:00 PM. It's about a two-hour program. Now, this is not the, hey, let's all load up in the Chevy Astro van and go chase tornadoes. That's, that's not the training you're gonna be getting besides a Chevy Astro van. It's a terrible idea to go chase tornadoes in. This will be so you can be our eyes and ears out in the field, because a lot of times in this technologically savvy world that we live in, we're able pretty quickly to get an idea when something's going on, because chances are somebody's got that phone out and taking pictures or video. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, everybody just be weather-aware.
Just wanna say, I called you Jeff, and I, and I know your name's Josh, I apologize.
That's, that's okay. I mean, I, I promise you, I worked for the fire service for the better part of my life. I've been called a lot worse than Jeff.
I had a brother named Keith, and so I typically answer to Keith. If I hear the word Keith said, I usually turn around and say what.
Yeah, well, it's, at my house, when, when Kim says anything, I say, yes, ma'am. Doesn't matter what she's calling.
I've got the same Kim. I got a Kim at my house, and I do the same. Thanks for the move. I know that's not, moving's not easy. If it's business or home, or going from college dorm to another one, thank y'all, the whole EMA team for the move and for making that happen in such quick order.
It was a citywide effort. We had wonderful departments that helped out and came alongside of us. It took us two years to move over there, and we moved back home here in about, I guess, four and a half days. So a lot of late nights, but finance will be glad to know there was only four hours of overtime. So, and it's just like the old Baptist saying, if you feed them, they will come. So I told the staff that I would provide the pizza, and if they would come help move, and they did, so four and a half days, we were able to make it happen.
Good, sure. Good deal, thank you.
We need to start writing all these quotes down.
Good day, council. Howell Matthews with the Public Works Department. I've got a little bit of housekeeping to do, but I've got some exciting news also. I want to announce that February the 28th of this month is the deadline for exemptions on your garbage. If, if, if you fall within income level, you need to get with our collections department here on the first floor. But the deadline for exemptions, if you're currently exempt, you have to renew that, and that will be on the 28th of this month. If you are not a current applicant for that, you can come up any time of the year, at any time, and, and apply for that. And there's some stipulations with it. We're asked about that lot, a lot, and I really don't have all the answers. It wouldn't be worth our time to talk about this now, but they can answer these questions in the revenue department. It's basically gonna be income-based, either social security or disability. So if you're a candidate for that, interested in that, you need to contact the people at the end of the hall over here. We've, leafers, we've still running the leafers, and we'll continue to do that at least another month. Currently, we're in the South Gadsden area, and we're working our way west. Will be Walnut Park after that. We're currently in South Gadsden, and that may run over into next week, just depending on the volume of material out there. So we get asked that frequently, so I wanted to announce that. Now to the good news, the exciting part, we're getting back into recycling, and we're gonna get into it big time. But COVID shut us down to a large degree. We've, we've moved some personnel around. We had to pull in all of our cardboard trailers, but we're gonna slowly be putting the trailers back out into service. We'll start in the epicenter of the city in community parking lots downtown, and we will spread out as we, our game plan unfolds, and we're gonna go bigger and better than ever. And that's something that I know the mayor is, he's a big proponent of that, and we're gonna, we're gonna take care of that. Also, I want to announce there's gonna be a change effective Monday of our recycling center hours over on Henry Street. We've, again, because of COVID, we've closed down limited staff. We've bolstered the staff over there, but we're gonna open up to the public from 7:30 till 5 o'clock, seven till 5 o'clock. So everybody should have an opportunity to come over there and deliver their recyclables, and we appreciate everything that you do. Businesses, however, it's gonna be from 7:30 till 2:30, because they're usually larger volumes. And let me say real quickly what, what we are currently accepting. Cardboard, corrugated cardboard is where we get the biggest return for the city, and with these trailers that we're putting out in the community, strictly for corrugated cardboard, and I'd like to ask you all, please, don't mix materials in there, because it virtually contaminates, contaminates the load, and a lot of times, we just have to landfill it, unfortunately. We, we don't have the resources to pick through everything, so if you'll help us do that part, keep the, just cardboard in the trailers, but we accept plastics one and two at the recycling center. We also accept aluminum, mixed metals, and mixed paper also. So if you have any questions, give us a call at Public Works at 549-4703. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Howell.
Yes, sir.
Glad to hear the recycling center hours are getting back to normal, being extended. Any other departments or committees or boards? All right, then we'll move into remarks by mayor and council. We'll start today with District Seven, and we'll go downhill, I guess. We'll start at the mountain and come on down.
That's right. Just real quick, another positive day of city business. I appreciate everybody's hard work. I'm really, really excited about the recycling center getting re-backed open and getting those green trailers out. That'll, I know a lot of people in the city of Gadsden are gonna be happy about that. And again, thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra.
And I would just like to echo Public Works. Thank you for everything you do, and I know Howell, you're here representing a whole team of people, but thank you for everything, and we really appreciate the recycling. And we'll do a better job of educating in our districts and reinforcing that for recycling, along with what we're gonna do for our trash.
Councilman Avery.
Thank you. District Three meeting will be today at the Civic Center. 6:00 PM to 6:30 will be vendor and fellowship hours, and then 6:30 promptly will start our meeting to 7:30. Also, community cleanup in District Three will be February the 18th, and the marketing and times will be announced. They are already on the marketing material, but I didn't write it down, so I'm, I don't wanna give that information out wrong. And, and speaking to the Henry Street Recycling Center, I actually went by there to visit and look at, looked at the operations, really some dedicated gentlemen over there that I met, and they walked me through the entire center there, and it, it's, it's heavily used. So I'm very grateful for the recycling center. Not a big component of where it's located, but I am heavily, heavily excited about how we are able to generate some funds from there, and then those, those two gentlemen that were there, thank them for their, for them taking me around. And lastly, big condolences out to, almost like a big brother of mine, and that's Fred Carter in the loss of his son. And so we're asking that the community just put their arms around them and continue to keep them in your thoughts and your prayers as they go through this, this situation. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. Let me start by saying to God be the glory for the service, the effort, and the relentlessness of Mr. Martin and Lieutenant Josh Russell for thinking not of themselves and putting themselves in harm's way, harms way, to make sure that the young child was safe after some weight getting into the highway. So we thank, thank you for that. I want to congratulate Ms. Williams on her accomplishment and 25 years of service to the public library, to the city of Gadsden, and to District One. We grew up together, so we congratulate you. And I wanna say congratulations to those students. We attended signing day on last week, so we wanna say congratulations to those athletes who, football players, who were able to get scholarships and the potential of walking on, walking onto some football teams. So congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. Just wanna reiterate about Lieutenant Josh Russell and Jeff Martin that's in my district there on Rainbow Drive, and I know exactly where that happened, and when I saw the pictures, I knew exactly where they were, where he was, and, you know, as Lieutenant Russell said, I mean, God just put him at the right place at the right time, and Jeff Martin said the same thing. It was just, it's a miracle that that happened the way that it did, and Lord was looking out for that, for that young child and his family, so we're just grateful that it all worked out. And I know Chief Jaggers could, he's proud of Lieutenant Russell, but I know he's proud of all of his police department. You know, there's a lot of things we don't see that happens that our, our men and women in blue do for us day in and, and day out, and we're, we're a grateful city for that service that our police department provides, and also our first responders, our fire department. These are the men and women that run toward the fire or run toward the calamity, the bullets, while the rest of us are probably going in the other direction. So thank you guys for, for what you do. I think you saw today that we're getting serious about litter in Gadsden. It's just a mindset. I think people are used to just throwing stuff on the ground. I think they're used to dumping stuff on the side of the road, as in, it's not my problem anymore. With the, Mayor Ford says it's your problem, and these fines are gonna tell you that they're your problem. So service is being noticed, or notice is being served, rather. Do not litter in Gadsden, 'cause we're gonna catch you, and you will receive fines. Speaking of the mayor, he and the chief of staff, Brett Johnson, David Hooks from the IDA, IDA Department, and Rod Scott with the IDA Department and the city are in Washington, DC as we speak, having very important meetings. They're working on behalf of the city to bring back federal funds and money and programs to the city of Gadsden. So Godspeed to those folks that are working for us and that are very diligent in what they're doing. They've got a full day planned, and I think probably a full day even tomorrow. So a lot of hard work is, is being done on behalf of the city of Gadsden through this new administration. I say it every week almost, if you can't be excited, I, you know, need to check yourself. And I wanna go back to remark, I mean, to departments and reports and committees. Last time he was here, I failed to recognize him, but I see Mr. Tony Reddick, the superintendent of the Gadsden City School System. Tony, thank you for being here. Thank you, we're here during the pre-council, and thanks for coming. You're welcome if you don't feel like you have to, but if you'd like to share something with us, you're, you're welcome to do so.
Just one thing. Adewel County's telling me, first place Chris I of Gadsden Mills, second place Michael Yolter from Your Brown.
Well, congratulations to those students. Way to go. And congratulations. Okay, good, that'll be great. Well, we appreciate what you do and all of your staff, and of course, the board at Gadsden City School System. If you haven't had a chance to drive by Gadsden City High School, we have a brand-new softball field for girls. We have a brand-new baseball field for our young men, and we have new tennis courts, and it is really a class, the state-of-the-art class facility that you guys have built for our students. So thank you so much for, for what you do, and we look forward for you coming back anytime. You're always welcome, and I appreciate you being here today. Thank you so much. With that, we will call our meeting closed. Be adjourned.